Are you ready, Chuck?
Yeah, we're ready.
We're going to call this meeting of the Board of Education to order. Can we please rise for the President of the Board?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can we get a motion to approve the meeting agenda? So Neil, second by Dr. Francis. One item I want to note, as opposed to years past, we're actually planning to have a little bit of discussion after the report from the superintendent. So I'm noting that now if somebody feels like it's necessary to make a motion to add discussion. No? Just checking. Okay, that's fine. All right, so all in favor of approving the meeting agenda? Seven zero, Mr. Chair absent. Very good. So we'll turn it over to Mr. Mayo for the presentation of the budget.
Good evening.
Welcome to... You're leading on the budget.
Okay. Good evening and welcome to the presentation, the fiscal year 20 budget presentation. Before I begin, I'd like to thank Laurie O'Donnell and her team for their amazing work on both the budget and a new rendition of the budget book. I understand the pressures... Yes. I understand the pressures that our town government is under and our team is working hard to partner with them in every possible way. That being said, we are making progress in our strategic plan, which has transformed teaching and learning in our district. We would like to continue the investment we have made and the momentum we have built in making learning personal, which is resulting in improved student outcomes. This is a very lean budget, as you will soon see. So as we go to the slide up here, our presentation tonight is going to consist of those five bullets there. And I was wondering if I could click and turn pages at the same time. The answer right now is no. I'm good, I'm fine. We have a tightly aligned, a tight alignment between our mission, our vision of the graduate, and our strategic goals. And this is in the forefront when we develop the budget. The mission, vision, and strategic goals all align in service of our students' academic, personal, interpersonal growth. Our strategic plan supports these objectives by making learning personal for each student. No matter where a student is on the continuum of learning, when you arrive in the Greenwich Public School System, we set goals together and provide opportunities for each student to grow academically, personally, and interpersonally. Okay, so our proposed, in order to support our objectives and our strategic plan, I am proposing an operating budget of $164,774,196 for the 2019-20 school year. This represents a 2.83 or 4.5 million increase over the budget for the current year, the majority of which is driven by contractual obligations. Contractual obligations alone, without increasing any of the else, brought us in over at 3%. We had to make reductions in order to move to 2.8%. More on that later in the presentation. Proposed capital for next year, including a number of major projects already underway, is $51.5 million. Before we take a closer look at these proposed budgets, allow me to briefly set the context for how the budget supports our work. I am proud to say that the Greenwich Public Schools moved from the sixth highest performing district in Connecticut to the fourth highest performing district based on the state's performance index, a set of 12 academic, personal, interpersonal indicators, including a rigorous growth target. As we look at our students' outcomes on standardized assessments, the SBA in grades three through eight and the Connecticut School Day SAT in grade 11, in both English and Language Arts and in math, we are pleased to see an upward trend, not only for students as a whole, but also for students with high needs. Outcomes on advanced placement exams continue to increase with scores of three or more on 94% of the 2,000 exams taken. So as I said, 94% of our students scored a three or better, 79% scored a four or better, and 42% of our students achieved a perfect five. The Greenwich Public Schools has been focusing on growth for a while now. The state has caught up with us and they, and their key metric for the state growth is no longer proficiency, it is growth. This slide shows GPS growth rate over the last three years in math as measured by the state. Blue is all students, the percentage of GPS students who met state growth targets. Orange is high need students. Although we are higher than the state for all three years, there is an opportunity for us to improve and set more aggressive targets for those who need to catch up. The growth metric is a huge component of the next generation, and we are fourth in the state and we'd like to stay there. And that's math growth up there right now, and this is ELA. So again, we are higher than the state, but there's lots of room for us to support growth in our students. Beyond standardized assessments, our students are performing at higher levels academically, athletically, artistically, and are committed to serving others. There are so many highlights on this, I'll just give you a few. One, 52 students recognized in this year's National Merit Scholarship Program. Six state athletic championships last year. Our science research program is not only the top program in Connecticut, it's the top program maybe in the United States, but we're thinking it may even be the top program in the world. That's saying a lot. We have 34 students named to all-state musical performance groups. And just this past Monday, I attended the National Honor Society Ceremony at Greenwich High School, and we celebrated the induction of 281 seniors into the Honor Society based on character, leadership, scholarship, and service. And now we move to enrollment, folks. And over the last 10 years, we have averaged approximately 8,900 students. In the last five years, we experienced slight enrollment increases and are projecting a sixth year before leveling off to projections of another 10 years of steady enrollment averaging approximately 8,900 students. In planning for the 2019-20 budget, we are projecting an increase of 117 students at the secondary level versus the projections made for the current year and a decrease of 80 students at the elementary level. In the main, Greenwich Public School students are well-prepared for kindergarten. They bring a wealth of cultural perspectives and experience to share. They value learning, believe it is important to do well at school, they're connected and engaged in school activities, and by the time they graduate from GHS, they are well-prepared to go to college. This year, over 1,800 students have been identified as qualifying for free or reduced price meals according to their family socioeconomic status. This is 20% of our students. We have experienced a five-year increase in the number and percentage of students qualifying for special education services, over 1,000 students, or 12% this year. English language learning students have been relatively consistent as a percentage of our student population at 5% or 6%. However, we are providing services to an additional 100 students as compared to last year. For many of our students with high needs, we are addressing more than one high need factor. The percentage of students with high needs and with multiple high needs is increasing. The blue bar on the bottom of the chart is rising from 4.3% last year to 6.0 this year. So the number of students we have and students' need factors both play a critical role in program and budget development, both of which are expected to increase based on projections and trends for next year. Operating budget development. As we begin the budget development process... Sorry about that. As we began the budget development process, we start with a pro forma. What will it cost to provide what we currently provide with new contractual increases applied and direction to hold all non-contractual expenditures constant or reduce? The only changes made initially were to remove the bank rental for the Lebanon school, knowing they would be moving into a new building before the next school year, and adding $600,000 to address trends in out-of-district tuition. More on that later. This process resulted in an over 3% increase. Considering that the BET guidelines discussions, although they were not established before we finalized the budget, and the current fiscal environment, we knew we had some work to do. After identifying efficiencies and reductions of almost $600,000, we are proposing an operating budget for 1920 of $164,774,196. This is a budget-to-budget increase of 2.83% and essentially provides the same programs and services as we currently provide. No new initiatives or programs are being proposed. The vast majority of the increase is due to contractual obligations, salary, and transportation. The budget-to-budget increase, again, 2.83% or 4.5 million. Salary and contracts, 4.34 million. Transportation contract, 172,000, and out-of-district tuition, 600,000, offset by $569,000 in reductions. Other than our contractual obligations, the only substantive increase is for out-of-district tuition. In Greenwich, we have experienced a 14% growth in spending between '15-'16 and '16-'17. While we have experienced an increase in out-of-district tuition costs, we outplace fewer students as a percentage of our special population than other districts, and our per pupil expenditures in this area are in line with other districts. However, as with other districts, we are experiencing an increase in placements and costs. In '17, the district exceeded the budget by $1 million, and similar results are now expected in '18-'19 based on current year-to-date trends. Therefore, we increased the proposed budget by $600,000 over the current year budget to address this trend. Reductions in additional efficiencies. In order to offset the contractual and out-of-district tuition increases, we look for additional reductions. Eliminate an off-site rental for the high school's Windrose and Community Connections Program. Reduce utilities based on a forecasting model. Create staffing efficiencies. Net 1.7 full-time equivalents reduction. And additional miscellaneous programs and services such as memberships and consultants. Staffing. Let's take a closer look at the staffing changes. Certified staff is proposed to increase by 1.5 FDEs over the budget for this year, and non-certified staff will decrease by 3.2 FDEs for a net decrease of 1.7 full-time equivalents. More specifically, as we staff for enrollment, we are projecting a net increase of 3.5 full-time equivalents, 6.5 for the projected increase at the secondary level, and a minus 3.0 FDEs at the elementary level supporting the projected enrollment decrease of 80. After careful review and reallocation responsibilities, we were able to achieve efficiencies in six different areas of the organization, resulting in a 5.2 FDE decrease. Additional detail on this is available in the budget book. In the first couple of months of this school year, we discussed potential new programs and services. It was understood that in order to bring on anything new, we would need to work with current allocations. To date, we have been unable to identify opportunities to reallocate staffing or funding to adopt new programs and services. Therefore, none of the proposed 1.5 in programs and services are included in the proposed budget for next year. This is the proposed budget, 2.8% increase due to contractual obligations and out-of-district tuition, offset by $600,000 in reductions in efficiencies, and no new programs or services. Now to the capital budget. First, let's review the master facilities plan, development as a foundation for our proposed capital budget. The master facilities plan was developed throughout the '17-'18 school year. In June, the Board of Education adopted a project prioritization schedule. Over the summer, our chief operations officer and directors of facilities began the work of detailing and populating the 15-year schedule based on the priorities discussed by the Board of Education. They also worked with principals and conducted visual inspections and site tours of facilities. Based on the master planning and summer facility reviews, as well as taking into consideration work already in progress and department workload capacity, we are proposing a capital budget of $51.5 million. Please note that the capital budget number proposed here is slightly different than in the budget book. We have posted an addendum to the board docs with the change, which now includes safety and security for $346,000 and $70,000 for food services, equipment replacements. Major projects are more involved projects and may require larger teams, committees, and will likely span over multiple years. We are requesting $35 million in major projects. The first three projects are in progress, and a full project budget is being requested for purposes of contracting and committing to services for the project, while the work may span over multiple years. New projects being introduced for fiscal year '20 include a design study for Riverside, Old Greenwich, and Julian Curtis, as recommended by our architects, and for designing the GHS entranceway. Before we talk about the next level of capital projects being proposed, I want to take a minute to review how we think about and use class size guidelines at the elementary level in terms of capacity and building utilization, and how that relates to the master facilities plan and the proposed design study for our elementary schools. We currently view utilization through the lens of class size guidelines. We have 224 pre-K to five classrooms in the district. Today, we're using 220, today we have 220 pre-K to five teachers. Four classrooms are available in the district. So we are at 98% utilization. If enough people live in each attendance area in the right grades to fill each classroom to the high end of the BOE guidelines, there would be, we'd have room for 5,100-plus students. Current enrollment is 4,230 students. 900 seats theoretically are available, but seats are not interchangeable, subject to grade and location. So the only way to reach theoretical capacity is to reassign students where there are available seats. Now, as you look at the master facilities plan and move towards next-generation schools, we will still use the established Board of Education class size guidelines to determine student-teacher ratios, and the next-generation model introduces the idea of allowing additional square footage per student to support learning in various and flexible ways. It suggests using a capacity based on needs by student and program to improve the student experience. While it's certainly a long-term goal of the district to achieve capacity standards aligned with the next-generation model, KGND Architects and the BOE were also extremely mindful of high priorities such as life safety, ADA accessibility, and air quality HVAC improvements. The Board of Education reviewed and approved proposed rankings of various priorities across all schools during the June 2018 meeting, and this helped inform the 15-year capital plan. The master plan study conducted by KGND also looked at the infrastructure of all school buildings, which suggested that an annual investment of $20 million would be ideal to address the deferred maintenance backlog and continuation of investing in the protection of our assets. Of the 13.8 million being requested, approximately 50% is for improving the envelope of our buildings, including projects like Eastern Middle School's curtain wall system and roofing work at Greenwich High School, generators, oil tanks removals, oil tank removals, abatement, electrical upgrades, and fire alarm and PA upgrades make up the safety, life safety, risk mitigation category. Space improvements detailed in the budget book and listed here to the right include items like the GHS locker room phase, interior painting, and smaller district-wide space improvements. Ongoing projects include network infrastructure, Wi-Fi and hardware, and district networking support, and digital learning, where the district will transition away from leasing devices to purchasing devices in an era of rising interest rates. Less reliance on external resources has presented savings of $170,000 that has been included. Next steps, the capital budget process runs through one additional process, the First Selectman's Capital Improvement Plan, or CIP, process, which overlaps the board's discussions of the fiscal year '20 budget. The Board of Education Chair and Superintendent will be fully engaged in discussions with the First Selectman to update the capital plan following discussions with other town departments submissions. The First Selectman will hold a public meeting on December 18th. So to summarize what I've presented you tonight, student performance is among the highest in the state and improving. Opportunities are there for improvement in our growth. We have a sixth year of increasing enrollment projected. Students with multiple high need factors are increasing. Contracts alone push pro-forma budget to more than a 3% increase. Efficiencies and reductions bring budget to 2.8%. Maintains relatively level services, maintains and reduces allocation for non-contractual expenditures, and a net 1.7 savings in FDEs. The budget is tight, and there is no room to address unanticipated expenses. This is a transparent budget process with numerous opportunities for public comment. We hope that you will support the budget as presented. Further reductions will have an impact. So let's stick with our plan to make learning personal and make a commitment to continue to fund our strategic direction. It is making a difference. The Board will discuss the budget at at least three more meetings throughout the next two months before taking action. There's a public hearing at each meeting. We encourage the community to follow the process through the BET and RTM approval stages, where there will be numerous additional presentations and public hearings. And Peter?
So in terms of the board's questions in regard to the budget, obviously a lot of discussion at each of our upcoming meetings, including tonight. Comments for the first round, so after tonight's meeting, will be due on the 13th by noon. Superintendent will give us the answers prior to the next budget meeting, so that if we have follow-up questions, we can do that. Then following the next budget meeting, and I think Kimmy will be able to put these dates on the Google Calendar and send them around to the board. Great, thank you. So there will be multiple opportunities for board members to ask written questions. In addition, the questions that we're asking at the meeting are going to be captured by Michael so that we have those documented.
Thanks, Peter. Just to summarize one more time, we're very proud of the direction we're going in. As Kim Eaves often says to me, "The line is going this way." We want to keep the line going that way. So please help us and support this budget as presented. Thank you.
Thank you, Ralph. As you're walking back over, Laurie, thank you very much. We know a lot of work went into the budget book. So any comments you hear from us are not gripes or complaints. We're used to seeing information in a certain way. This is a change for us, a change for the BET and the RTM. We might ask for some additional information. I know in certain program areas I missed the level of detail, so we might ask for some of that. We'll try to refrain from asking you to complete making last year's budget book. All right, with that, we'll open for comments, questions from board members. Mrs. O'Neill.
How do we want to do this? Do we want to go through it program by program, the operating budget, and then do the capital budget? This should be some sense of order, I would think.
I think we'll stick with operating first and then we'll move on to capital. And I don't know that we, my questions are not organized program to program, I'm just not that organized. Yeah, I know you are. So I think we can start at the beginning, if you'd like. So do you want to, you want to start, or do you need a moment?
Well, I can ask about... Ask a few questions that I have about summer school. I'll ask about summer school and you ask why, and then I'll let other people ask, and then I'll come back to some of the other questions I have about some of the other programs. So this is sort of background information that we kind of need to figure out where it is and how it is that we're spending money for summer school to look to see if there is some possibility of efficiencies there. So some of the information that I thought would be helpful for the board is the enrollment by site, and then the administrators and staffing FDEs by site. And then I didn't know if there was a general overall summer school supervisor over the site supervisors. And when we look at the summer school budget, does that expense in there include the nurses, the AAs, custodial services, consultants? What is all involved in that number? What is all involved in that number? So and sort of because they're connected, I'll ask about the ESY program. So does the ESY program, Extended School Year program, provide any services beyond the summer school program? Are there other services they provide? And then for the ESY, also what was the enrollment by site? And then whether ESY or the summer school receive any federal or state or local grants? And I guess the, then the other question is, what kind of revenue does the summer school generate? But the real bottom-line question is, what are possible efficiencies to be found in these two programs? They represent a really large amount of money, and I think there are possibly efficiencies there, maybe in combining sites, which then would reduce administrative costs and use some of the staff more efficiently. So I think we need to look at those numbers in terms of our cost and where we can save some money on that. And I will give the floor to someone else.
All right, Ms. Tatum and then Ms. Rabin.
I'm on page 47. This is just a curiosity question. In our last meeting, we talked a lot about social workers and psychologists. I see an increase for both, which is not necessarily a bad thing, but if you could take a look at line 33 and line 34 and let us know if the staff's changed or anything is new.
I have a couple on page 44 and 45. So like Barbara mentioned, it was in the Extended School Year, the increase in services other than personnel. And then same on, it was section 40. I think maybe it explained it, but there was services other than personnel, but that might have been the software moved from IT to communication, so maybe that's the answer. On page 47, number 39, supplies and material increase, $274,000. And this one is a big one. If you go to page 120, I remember last year, there was a lot of discussion about how many staff we added. I think the final net was like eight, but I'm not remembering 100%. So if you go to teachers for core curriculum, it struck me, we don't have like 14.8, we don't have, I know that staffing is, could be less than a person, but students aren't less than a person. So could we explore what the impact would be if middle school was 15 to 1, so round it up to 15, and the high school was 16 to 1? What that impact would be?
And I guess if I could just follow on to that, I think these ratios have been in place for probably 20 years or more. So if there's any current thinking out there as to what the ratios ought to be, I know there was some discussion last year about doing that work, and I think it's probably a good place to do that. Yes, Ms. Dell.
I just want to take a step back for a second and Lori tell you that I've only seen two budget books, but this is like 100% improvement from my perspective. This was, I really liked how you organized it. I know we talked about it in the Finance Committee a lot, but it presents very well, gave me a sense for what's going on in this town in general, so that's very helpful. And one of the things that I think that maybe was lost a little bit in this, especially some ICBET members in this audience, is that four benefits packages, am I correct about that, Bob, have been saved in this budget as well, which is something that's notable in addition to staff savings that you said for, you know, overall benefit packages. And the other thing I'd like to point out is that, and then I'll ask my nitty-gritty question, is last year, we had an increase of 2.62% of it with a teacher contract that went up at only 2.25%. And now you managed to get it to 2.83% with a teacher contract that went up 3.6%. So that in itself is pretty remarkable. Having said that, there's more to go, unfortunately. And with my sort of calculations, if we were to meet the guidelines, let's look, we have another 1.3 or so, am I right about, that's kind of where we figured out? 1.367 to go. And we've done about $600,000 so far. So another 1.3, I imagine, isn't easy. But it looks like that might be something that we need to work on over the next few weeks. One of the things that I just was interested in, since you set this up so nicely, as I look at the, now I have to find it, in the work section where you set up the administration chart? Yes, I'm sorry, it's on to page 20. Just out of curiosity, when I look at it from a business perspective, what percentage, I mean, I guess I could figure it out, there's probably like, if you did this, middle school principals times two, 11 schools, it's probably 70 or so administrators. What is, as a percentage of the overall staff, I think it works out to maybe five? So we're looking at like 5% basically. So is that what we look at across other school districts? Is that the right percentage? I would just like to think about that a little bit. We have to look at larger districts. Just, I'm just trying to think about it operationally. I mean, administrative pressures are like 10% of the business, so five might be lean, actually. But I'd like to think about it versus other school districts, because I can't really look at it from a business perspective.
Ms. Rabin.
When you mentioned other districts, so some of the feedback that we got at the Budget/Finance Committee was some benchmarking, so I know that that hasn't been assembled yet, but when we get to the RTM, that was an expectation that we'd have some benchmarking as to how we are comparing to other districts in terms of per pupil spending, and then some of the other, I'm always going to get it wrong, thank you Jennifer, the strategic school profile, the stuff that comes from the state. And then there was also discussion, apples to apples, or what the true cost of education is, is because the benefit packages are on the town side? The possibility to include it so that they got that total number of what it's costing the town to educate our children.
And I think just to follow on to that is, if we don't pick imperative districts, someone else will do that for us. So we need to have a reason why we're using certain districts as comparisons. Ms. Tatum and then Mr. Scher.
There were changes made. One of them was the elimination of the World Languages Coordinator. I just don't have a recollection as to what happened with the work. Where did it go? Who's doing it? Where is it living in the organization now? That can be answered tonight. I mean, that's a simple one, but it would help me understand the structure.
We gave the responsibilities of the World Language Coordinator to our ESL Coordinators. She was not full-time. She's now full-time at ESL and World Language.
Mr. Scher.
Are we just doing operating right now, or what are we? We're just doing operating? Ralph, appreciate your first budget. I know we're supposed to be gentle, it's your first budget. I mean, I think we've all read the guidelines. I mean, the thing that's hidden in this budget is, when you look at our total cost for schools, it's not 162 million, it's much larger than that, because there's so many off-budget items that are kept in another budget in the town that we don't see. Now unfortunately, this budget is paying the price for a labor contract that is, you know, 3.5% raises for teachers, plus healthcare, you know, they're, it's going up 8%. Shocker, healthcare, the thing that ate operating budgets, true of companies around the country, and true businesses around the country, and true of public organizations around the country. So it's pretty clear, if you read the guideline letter from the BET, they've obviously spent a lot of time thinking about it. I don't think they're giving, you know, they've given a guideline, they've given to pay for all of this increased healthcare and all these other things, but it means that, you know, everybody's forced to have their belt be reasonably tight to pay for all these incredible increases in compensation that are going to wind up, you know, benefiting our employees. Not necessarily a bad thing, but just a reality of life. So it seems to me, you know, to your point, and I would expect you to say it, you know, please support a budget that is well above guideline. Thank you, that's what you should be saying, right? But in reality, as we go through this process, we may be forced to adjust this. And I can't recall, maybe I can, maybe Ms. O'Neil will remember, I think she's been here nearly as long as I have. I don't recall a budget where we had to go find almost $1.5 million. It probably has happened, I'm just not remembering. What's really clear to me is, you don't get to that kind of, which would still be a 2% increase in our budget. You know, people talk like it's a cut. It's not a cut. It's actually a cut in the increase. So it's still a pretty healthy increase, but you know, it says if you have to get to the guideline, we've got to go find roughly $1.5 million. I don't think you get there by shaving a little bit off of everything. It requires a little bit of maybe some fundamental rethink on the way some programs are delivered. Maybe it's luxuries we might not be able to afford like we've had previously. We have a very robust summer school program. We have lots of really robust summer school programs, which makes, part of that's what makes Greenwich Public Schools so terrific. But I guess the question that I wanted to ask, and maybe it's not asking tonight, but I will definitely want to hear it by the next meeting, is if we have to go find 1.367 million, let's just say to get to two, because by the way, I want to point out, two is the top of the guideline that the BET gave us. They actually asked for between a 1 and 2% increase, and let's just assume we can hit the top of their increase, it's affordable to prevent a greater than 3.5% tax increase in town, is more or less what they're asking for, which is pretty smart. But if we had to do this, Ralph, I would want to hear what would be the innovative ideas that would have to happen. And I hope nobody plays the, you know, the, I don't think anybody will, but you know, sometimes you see this stuff of like, okay, I'm gonna, not clean rooms, you know, you'd see kind of the crazy stuff, but we, and I want to think about what would be the innovative ideas and trade-offs that we would have to make so that we could have a prioritization decision, so that ultimately, I'd be interested, maybe the rest of the Board isn't, but I'd be interested in a conversation that said, as you step down closer to two, what trade-offs are you making one step at a time? And what, how much do they save you? So I don't know if you guys have done any of that. Have you done any of that thinking so far? Have you been able to? It's, I know it's a hard job just to get this thing out the door. Have you been able to do that part yet?
Peter, we've been focused on this budget.
Just getting it out the door.
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
And we stand behind this budget, so that's where we are right now. If we have to make reductions, we'll work on that, but right now, this is our, this is our budget.
I think that's information that I would need, even if we were going to try to propose a 2.83. And here's the other thing I think you should be prepared for. Even if we propose 2.83, and the BET and the RTM are forced to adjust it, it's much better if we're giving them guidance on how to adjust it than them just making it up and willy-nilly cutting it. So even if we don't do it, it's worth spending the time on the thinking so that they're, they get better guidance from us.
Ms. Tatum.
I'd like to suggest that the Budget Committee undertake what Mr. Scher was proposing, which is specifically to request a list of reductions from the Superintendent and the Cabinet, potential reductions, that the four people on the Budget Committee do some heavy lifting before it's brought back to the eight-person Board. Otherwise, I fear a protracted process of long meetings, difficulty reaching consensus, and I don't think it's a good process in general. I think some of the work has to be done in committee. This is the first time we've ever had this situation, and I think we need to be very careful about how we work toward our common goal.
Been doing a little soul-searching lately, going from, you know, reading the numbers and crunching through things to sort of what is my purpose on the Board? And I think it's important to balance sort of what is, what are the financial leaders of our town asking us to do, and what do we think is the right thing to do? And I feel like, you know, it may be that a middle ground is where I need to be in terms of advocating for our schools. So I don't know that I would support us cutting our budget down to 2%. The difficulty is sort of what is the right number there? But I think first to say that I think that's something I would, I would be interested to hear sort of more broadly from the town in terms of, do they support us needing to make that kind of change? And I think that would be interesting for us to hear over time. The other thing related to that is I feel like, you know, we've been talking for a while about doing an overall program review and using our ECR data and that model to do that. And I felt like that was something we had sort of talked potentially about doing this year. As most people know, we've not had the most stable staffing and leadership in the last few years, so I think that makes it a bit difficult to get there. And I am a little nervous about relegating to that, that to a very short process. I think it's something where I would have preferred to have this information come to us and have us have sort of a deeper conversations as an eight-member Board to be able to do that. So I'm not quite sure how we make that happen in a reasonable way to where that number's going to end up being for this year, but I would be interested to hear if there is still a plan for how we're going to use that model, or how we're going to use something to help us review all of our programs, because I do think that whether we have a need to cut our budget or not, I think it's something we really should be doing, is looking at our other programs, looking at what our goals are, what the outcomes are, are these programs, you know, even if we had all the money we wanted, that doesn't mean you should keep every program. And so I do feel like at some point, that is something we seriously need to do, because we add initiatives, we add plans, we add new things that we want to do, that doesn't mean there shouldn't be a review of what we've got to see if there are things that maybe aren't useful anymore. So sort of separate from the budget issue, I think just to be good stewards. So I would be interested to understand when we think that's something that we could do in a broader sense, and if some of that could happen reasonably in the short term, but certainly even if it doesn't happen for this year, I think it's something that is a board we should be doing.
Ralph, I don't know if you or Lori want to talk about that program reviews before we move on? Mrs. O'Neil.
So I think that it's beholding for us to stay within the guidelines. We've been asked to. We say we're responsible to the taxpayers, and I think it's our responsibility to then be within the guidelines, to say, I was disappointed to see the budget come in so far above the guidelines, because now that puts us in a situation of having to cut things that maybe the administration should have thought about sooner about cutting. I also think that some of the monies, we should take a look at some of the monies that we have and do a program review, because it's true, we keep adding, especially at the high school, we keep adding this and adding that, and this program helped that one. And we don't have an overall view, so it seems to me that to spend a little money to save a lot of money would be, would be in our best interest. And like Dr. Francis said, I don't want to put that off, it's something that's long overdue, and probably if we had done it, we wouldn't be sitting here now looking at, looking at programs. But I firmly believe that we should be within the guidelines.
I've got a couple of areas of suggestion, I guess suggestions for places to look. One thing that I don't understand, and Lori, maybe you can give us more of a breakout of this, what are in those services other than personnel buckets? I know people have asked in specific lines. They are significant buckets of money, and I'd like to know what's in there for each of the major program codes. So if you can give us a description, that would be helpful, other than personnel. One other thing I wanted to ask, and it's not broken out in here, I know that we do spend, and you will need to send people to conferences, so that's travel and transportation conference fees, hotels. What is that number? Because I know we've had some success in the past few years of getting grant money, and maybe we're going to need to rely on grant money more. So if we can figure out what that overall spend is, we could take a look and see if that's something we want to continue. I want to bring up assistant deans. I know it was on your ask again this year. Last year you asked. Last year you asked for it, the Board did not fund that. However, those positions were filled through other means, through positions at the high school, and through the special education budget. Those positions are, when you asked for them this year, the Board said, that the Board said we are not going to add them to this budget, they're not here. I want to understand how we're going to make sure that those aren't then positions that get filled again, year after year, somehow using position, other positions that we're accounting for. It concerns me a little bit that we've, in the past, had no to certain positions. Athletic coordinator comes to mind, where we've said, no, we're not going to add a coordinator, and a coordinator got added. So I just want to make sure that we're thinking that through. Dr. Francis.
I have a slightly different perspective on our responses aboard to those items. My feeling was that, I know I personally felt like, you know, maybe we do need someone else to come in as administrator, but I don't feel that I, as a Board member, can make the decision as to which would be the best. I don't feel that I ever said that that was not a needed position or a useful position. I think I felt that it was not something that we could add extra money for. So I don't feel that it was inappropriate, when they were able to reorganize, to be able to have that position maintained with, with maintenance of the same number of, of, of heads or staff, or whatever you can call that. So I, I feel a little bit differently about that process, and I think they did it within the budget and the, the number of heads, so I don't think that's necessarily going against what the Board had, had discussed.
Mrs. O'Neill.
Sort of a follow-up on the assistant deans, that, they were created as a pilot, which I'd never heard that we ever had a pilot about staffing, and they were put in without Board knowledge, and then when we said we didn't want them, they were then, a psychologist was used, another position was used, and I forget what. And it was called Evolve. And so, and actually, at the last Board meeting, we did ask for a history of Evolve, when did it come, what's its goal, what's the outcome for it? To my mind, in all the years I've been in the district, it was always a trade between Paris and a teacher. Did that principal in that building want Paris in the classroom, or was she, did you feel, he or she feel that you were better off with a certified teacher? And then all of a sudden, we began trading Paris for psychologists and so on, and sometimes we were trading Paris who weren't, some buildings were losing Paris, so someone else could get something in, in another building. So I think we really need to have something in writing about what the goal is, what's the process of Evolve? It seems that we hear about it after the fact, and yet those decisions are made in advance of many of them. So we need to know what the, the process is, what, what it has looked like maybe for the past two or three years, who approved it, did it ever get approved? And how do we deal with it going forward?
Mr. Scher.
I want to add something to what the last three people said, and just maybe provide a different way of thinking about this. You know, we talk in the Board of, let's be at the high level, let's be strategic, and then some Board member will pop up and say, it's outrageous, you know, you're micromanaging. Usually that means, I don't like what you're talking about. And then we get really prescriptive with the administration, and then Superintendent after the Superintendent shows up and says, I'm the CEO, and here's this hard line between you and the Board, and we go on this little stupid merry-go-round, and it goes around and around and around. I, I want to say, hey, you know, we have a Superintendent who kind of gets Greenwich, so the Board doesn't, could maybe adjust the way it behaves, because we now have someone sitting in the chair, who we don't need to spell what happens if you trade off here or there, what does that school want, how's the community going to react? It, it's actually remarkably helpful, having somebody like Ralph Mayo in the job. And I, I, my suggestion would be, let's try on the pants of being the governance organization, and not be the micromanager organization. Maybe what we do is we say, look, this is the level of where we, this is the expectations we have for the school system, this is the level of spending that has to be met. And then before we do any of this, that's just why I don't want to do this in this first meeting, because I could give you chapter and verse about what I think about one program or another, or if you asked me the question, where would you go look and cut, I could give you 20 things right off the top of my head. But I don't want to do that. What I think we should do is say, signal, which I think we're already doing, Ralph, or some of us are already doing, we're probably not going to be able to tolerate 2.83. We probably have to be somewhere below that. And I'm interested in hearing the proposal from the administration. To be, to be candid, I really appreciate how they got to 2.83, but I'll give you a top-line governance. Taking out 1.7 heads, or adding 1.7 head, I forget what it was, in 1,360 is, we need to make a bigger effort, right? We need to make a bigger effort, it would be my, my general thought. So I'd be interested in hearing from you, Ralph, between now and the next meeting. Okay? Okay, if I have to do something, what are the big hitters that are going to generate, changes that are going to generate hundreds of, of thousand dollars? I also wouldn't mind if you'd come in and said, oh, by the way, it's not just about trying to take out 1.3 million, I want to scale back $5 million in projects, in programs, to use your analogy, Dr. Francis, scale back $5 million from existing programs, and I can't, I'm not going to put all the money back in, but here's the $3.5 million in new things I really want to do that I think are going to move the needle. I mean, I'm looking for some innovative thinking here, it's not just about take the things that we have exactly as they are, keep the headcount, roll it over on the labor contracts, and cut a little bit on expenses. I don't, I realize this is your first year, and I realize you caught this thing in flight, Ralph, I know you keep saying I own it, and I appreciate you saying that, but no doubt about this, you caught this thing in flight. Next year's will be yours, for sure. But in the meantime, I'd like to, love to build off of what, you know, Dr. Francis is saying, maybe some of the comments coming from others, and say, what are the significant program moves here that you might contemplate making, not that we would prescribe? That's what I'd be interested in hearing.
Mrs. Dayton and Ms. Stowe.
I'd like to come at it from a different direction, instead of thinking about cuts, cuts, cuts. What about grants? What about bringing in revenue? When we look at page 39, we see grants in '15 to '16, we see it in '16 to '17, '17 to '18, then we see nothing. So I know grants have probably a long timeline that you need for the application, and then receiving of the grant, and then the planning to expend the grant, if within our timeframe, many organizations in the nation offer grants, many. Why don't we look at producing more revenue that we can use in this time of reductions? And when you get a chance, page 39, why is there nothing listed for '18 to '19 and '19 to '20? Where can we go to get some new revenue to put into the school system?
Ms. Stowe.
So I think that you've, I've said it before, I think this, you've done an amazing job so far, but I think there's more to do. And I have to say, I'm not saying we have to get to 2%, but it would be nice to see what this would look like, and what our school system, sort of echoing what you said, would look like if we were at 2%. And I don't see us getting to 1.5% and somehow splitting the guidelines, so just in the hopes of getting to 2%, $1.3 million, you're right, it probably isn't sort of, it's probably ripping off the Band-Aid, I mean, you could probably look for $10,000 here and there, but that's a lot of $10,000. So I think you have to really rethink something, and you're right, Peter, I don't think it's our job to do that, we're not the educators, you are. So if you can come to us with, if we do this, this is what's going to happen, it's not going to, we're not going to be delivering level services, we're not going to be making learning personal, we're not going to be doing this in science anymore, whatever it is. And I have to admit, I'm not familiar with the high school, but I know people are always talking about there being a lot of things that have been added there and never taken away. So, you know, just big ideas, but that's for you to figure out. Good luck.
I'll just add that, that the lens for me is the, the impact on the, on the students and teachers in the classroom. Right, we have a lot of people that are not in the classroom, a lot of things that happen that are not in the classroom, that do impact what happens, but if you can tie things back to what is actually happening in, in classrooms, because that is where we make the student growth happen, it's where we grow the students as individuals, I think it's, it moves the needle for everything we do. Mr. Scher.
Just one quick reminder to all of us, by the way, I echo Ms. Dayton, if you, if we can find a way to go get revenue that we can keep, do it. There's one thing the public needs to be reminded, though, the taxpayers of Greenwich filled in a $6 million hole that was created by the state government in our budget. So, you know, even though we keep talking about up, you know, the BET thankfully, and the RTM, thank you very much, when the state of Connecticut said, we're not giving you $6 million anymore, despite the fact we spent, this town sends three, three-quarters of a billion dollars in tax revenue to Hartford every year, okay? They said, no more to you, you're too rich, and thank you to the BET and to the RTM for not impacting schools. So even though that revenue dried up, you know, we're talking about this budget, and everybody's going, oh my God, it's, it's so painful and what have you, you know, a lot has been done, thankfully, by the parents and taxpayers of this town, to minimize the impact of schools from what has horrendously happened in the rest of the state of Connecticut. Worth a reminder.
Ms. Holson.
First, I just want to say thank you again to, I want to echo the sentiments to Lori O'Donnell, because this also is my second experience with the Budget Book, and it's, is extremely, it's easy to follow, and I, I really appreciate the work that went into this. I also agree it's hard to micromanage, it's not our job, it's the experts to say, this is where, I mean, I can't say why, a psychologist versus an assistant dean versus an athletic coordinator versus this person, I still don't 100% understand Evolve. I've said that before, I'm still trying to wrap my head around Evolve. I, I, it's concerning when people get sort of, we have to remember they're dealing humans, and, and it's hard for me when people get moved from place to place, whether that's a, you know, the term, whether that's an AP shuffle, whether that's a, whatever that might be, whether that's Evolve, whether that's an assistant dean going to this place or this place, I think we have to remember that, what, how does this impact the students? So I think we need to keep the focus on the, the students, that's why we're here. I also think it's hard to say this specific, specific number, but I, every time that I've been on the Board that we've seen a new course, it's been added, and we keep saying, well, what might we cut, what might we cut? Like, this, this looks fantastic, this, this, this course, this textbook, we want that for our students, but I haven't yet seen us really take a lot of things away. And I think it's important to look at the, I think we talked at one point about seeing student, the, the actual price per student per program, not just the aggregate. I think that's important when we're doing this. I know that's a tall order to ask, I, I don't, I don't necessarily think that's something that the, in my opinion, I don't necessarily think that's something that the, the Budget Committee needs to go and, and do, and then all of a sudden, we're going to have a shorter meeting, I think we're still going to have a long discussion no matter what, because there's a lot of personalities and opinions up here. But I, I, I think we do need to, we need to see what, what you suggest. And I think we need to remember that it's, the focus is on the students, and sometimes we do have to just, as I said, rip off the Band-Aid, it's not always a gentle process, but we need to see where, where we can do that.
Mrs. O'Neill.
So I think it's our duty to approve a budget, and so I think it's our duty then to ask questions about that budget, and to say that the administration can come back and, and with whatever, they already came to us with suggestions that we said no, and then they came back on the Budget Book again. So we have a duty put on us by the state, to make sure that we are funding our schools properly, and that funding them in such a way as the students are increasing their achievement. So I will continue to ask questions about programs, because I think it's important that we understand how that money is being spent. So I will ask a few questions about Winwood. Winwood is now cost us, Winrose, sorry. So the, that program is going to save us some money by moving out of St. Catherine's, which we're spending an enormous amount of money. So the question I have about it is the current staffing, and what the projected staffing is for the coming year, what the enrollment is now, which I understand is quite small, and the enrollment projection for 1920, and that, there's services of $94,000 in there, and what is, what does that include? And so then, the other question is, now that we're moving it, are there expenses involved in moving it to someplace? Where is it going? And what's that going to cost us in terms of finding a site, or redoing a site for them, or what's it going to mean to another program that might have to, to move? So is there also savings in security and custodial and administrative assistance? So there's, there's, we're saving some money on rental, but I also want to know if there's other savings, and also if there's going to be costs. So how much in the end are we going to be saving by this move? And then the other question I have, will there be any programs still situated at St. Catherine's in 1920? No. Okay. And one other question, the, the Budget Book refers to a program called Community Connections, but I couldn't find a, a budget for it. And I couldn't find a budget for the social-emotional learning program. I assume that they're somewhere, I might have missed them, so if someone could, could direct me, that would be really helpful. And my last comment, maybe my last, is that this year I noticed that there is a $26,000 cut in the science budget. Now, last year we lobbied, the Board lobbied very hard to put $20,000 into the science budget, because we have such a fabulous science program that needed the money for very high-tech stuff. I mean, read it, the Greenwich Times, it is a stellar program, I don't think that's where we should be cutting, cutting money. And so that's where we, as a Board, need to say something. I don't think we should just let someone else make these decisions for us.
Got one more thing, just, I think it's line 37, it's sped maintenance. I'm not sure what other is, that's not exactly descriptive for me, so if you could provide a description when you do the written. I, I think it's line 37, it's, it's a sped, it's under sped, so there's personnel, services, other personnel, one other thing, and then it's other. I, I think it's the only place other appears in the budget, so it just kind of jumped out at me.
When it comes to professional development, I would like to know a little breakdown on that, how many, what we, what we got for that amount of money that we spent this year, and, or spending this year, what our goal was for this year, and what's the goal for 1920? Because that's a fairly large sum of money, that I would like to know what it is we're spending it on, and what's our goal with, with spending that, and how will we know whether, in the end, that money was, was well-spent? Do we look at student achievement? What do we look at? So I really think we need a breakdown of the professional development money, and a few words about what the goal is in, in terms of spending that and the outcomes.
Mr. Scher.
I have an item that is between capital and operating. You didn't do, there was such a space, did you?
Yeah, there's always space, actually, because I have one as well.
Okay. So Ralph, we're going to talk about, we've made this request for all this capital, but I think the Budget Committee was told in no uncertain terms recently, you were there, we don't have the capability to manage that kind of budget, okay? So we don't have, we're struggling as it is apparently, surprisingly, with the project management resources necessary to manage that kind of project list. So my question is, baked in here, is there the resource addition necessary to even manage that kind of capital budget? That's probably a, it would, it would be kind of, it's simple, it's a yes or a no. And if it's not, we need to highlight that as an item.
Do you want to answer that?
Yeah.
Peter, we think we have the resources to manage that, that amount of capital improvements right now. right now, and as we move forward, we are going to be hiring a project manager, we are going to be conducting a, I don't know if we want to call an audit, of all our capital expenditures, and we are going to make improvements based on that, and that's going to move pretty quickly. So, we should be ready for the capital projects when we start the process in June.
So, this budget includes that added, additional?
It was in last year.
Right, but you're convinced that by adding that, and you've included, you've rolled it over, because that, because when we met, I don't know, a month and a half ago, we didn't have that resource, right?
We just received over 30 applicants, and we're reduced.
And you think that'll be enough once you have that person here?
And we take a look at our processes and procedures, make sure that they're tight.
Sure.
Okay. Ms. Dayton.
I have an easy possible reduction in the capital listing. It says on page-
We're not at capital yet.
Oh.
Nope. He was actually asking, operating is the, do we have the people's front, so we're still on the people. Mrs. O'Neil.
So, Mr. Scher, I'm really glad you brought that up, because historically, and Ralph, you can probably fill in, we used to at one time have an assistant superintendent for finance, and then that got cut, and then it became two people, it came down to two people, one was in charge of budget, and the other was in charge of finance, and then one of those positions was then reduced. And I think it's time now for us to look at the, that position again, to make it so that we have a finance person and a budget person. We have so much going on, there is no way one person can handle what's going on, and we wouldn't be a benefit package, because you've got somebody in that, in a position there. So, it would just be, and I don't know what the amount of money is, and I could probably find out, but I do think that Lori and that office, there needs to be two people who can meet the public and deal with those issues, just like we recognized last year, we needed someone in facilities. We need to recognize, if we want to run an efficient system, we need to man the system, and we can't be frustrating people and the public by not getting things out in a proper fashion, and to maintain and look over our budget constantly. So, I think that's something to look at.
Can you answer this later? A couple of years ago, it was a recommendation to reduce some of the coaching. I'm not sure how many coaches are left in the district, where they are in the budget, what their roles and mandates are, how we measure their success, so if we maybe get an update on that, since it pertains to the budget. Yes, one last thing, I noticed, I think Lori might have pointed this up, but I'm not sure it was the same thing, on the IT MIS under line 39, there's supplies and materials, and it's not in capital, so I was a little wondering what that was. It might be a duplication, or maybe it ought to be one or the other, I don't know if it's fish or fowl, but if you could verify that. All right, is there anything else on operating? All right, if not, we'll move to capital, and I'll just open by saying, if you've ever wondered why you need to maintain a school building, look no further than Stanford, Connecticut, whose Westover School has been overtaken by MOL, the students were taken out of the school, they are actually renting the Pitney Bowes former headquarters and converting that into a temporary school building. I can tell you Stanford spent a couple hundred million dollars a few years ago repairing some other buildings at the last minute, because they didn't focus on their annual maintenance program. So, let that be a cautionary tale to us all. Mrs. Dayton.
I have a question that maybe Lori can answer tonight, otherwise, let us know by email. I'm concerned about an item on page 77, under early stages, central middle school field improvements, 4.7 million. It says feasibility studies are not underway as of yet. My question is, then, that implies the study will be done in this budget year, and the actual construction of the field would be moved out a year, so this 4.7 million perhaps is not in the right budget year. Could you speak to that?
Do you have a microphone she can use?
I'm sorry, I didn't realize there was. So, the feasibility study, we slowed down a little bit to take an opportunity to try to properly prepare our communications plan, but we are ready with the vendor to, or the, you know, the consultant, to begin, to begin work, as soon as we're, you know, have everything, you know, all in a row for us. So, there is a possibility that we could have more design work, additional site design underway next year, and what happens is, as we go through that design process and the bidding process, we actually need to have the funds available to us in order to commit to a contract. So, while the work may not happen until the following summer, which might be the beginning of FY '21, that July through August timeframe, we would want our contracts in place, and so we would need the funding available to do that.
All right, Mrs. O'Neil.
So, could you please explain to me where we are with the Western Middle School field? Have we filed what we've needed to file, and how is that progressing?
Western, we are actually scheduled for a follow-up within the next couple of weeks to receive an update. There was some additional testing that needed to be completed, based on, based on discussions that we had with the regulatory agencies, so we'll get an update at that time, and they'll give us some guidance in terms of what our next steps might be, if there is additional testing perhaps required. But in the capital budget, we did include what was required for us to publicly disclose in our financials, which was a potential range of cost. It's strictly that, it's the average of a range, so more to be determined on that as we advance through the process.
So, there's no light at the end of the tunnel yet?
Not just yet.
So, and then we've got Central being studied, so is there money in the budget then to look at Eastern? Because you can't, I don't think we ought to take a look at Central, get Central done, and then start a new one. I think we need to keep this process going, because we're in such desperate need of fields.
Is there money in the budget to do Eastern?
Yeah, to begin to do any kind of study on-
No.
No. So, you got to wonder whether, looking down the road, that's a smart thing to do, to include some design money in there.
Mr. Scher.
All right, I have other questions, but I'm just going to jump in, because we're on this one. Lori, I'm sure I don't remember every detail about Western that I should, so I'll just ask broad strokes, and I realize this didn't always happen under you either, but this has been this endless story of, it's like, I feel like I'm a teacher with the dog ate my homework, and here's why, is, I don't hear an urgency, and maybe you can help me understand what we're going to do about this, because I don't want to, I don't want to put 8.1 million dollars in the budget, because I think we've botched this project, I'll just say that flat out. We started this project with a lot of delineation, we started this project with a lot of sampling. Of course, the state said, "Send us the samples, we'll come back to you and tell you if you need to sample some more." The net of it is, they're not going to let you off the hook till you get to clean dirt. So, what I don't understand, though, is what the heck are we doing that it's, I think we're three years into sampling, and someone told me, and I don't know that this is true, that we didn't do a whole lot of sampling this summer when we could have. So, I guess I'd like to really understand, before we even talk about putting in the budget, money to actually remediate, even as a placeholder, what's the real plan to, I realize the state's, DEP's going to go at the rate they're going to go at, sometimes I think we're not the speediest in responding to DEP. We should never be the blocker. So, can you help me understand this a little better?
Honestly, it goes both ways, right? We're waiting for responses, and then there's times where we are, perhaps are not so quick to respond. In terms of my work ethic, I can honestly say, I really do try to stay on top of it and try to be as responsive as I can.
Let me just stop, because I'm not questioning your work ethic, I want to be really clear on that. I'm more interested, I'm not interested in anybody, I'm interested in results.
There is a lot of back and forth that goes on, and I don't know how to really define that, other than to say, samples take time, they're reviewed over weeks, they come in sort of like on a weekly basis, they're evaluated, we have to schedule in-person meetings, we have to talk about them, we have to decide what our next steps are, what additional sampling, you know, do we need to do to make sure we're addressing all the concerns that the regulators have, and that's literally happening, back and forth. Every time we meet with them, there are some more tests that we need to do. Then we have to go through a change order process, we have to get the scope work laid out, we have to do the paperwork process for a change order, which takes time, we don't want to do any work without that change order in hand, that's a lengthy process. So, there is a lot of that, there's a lot of administrative work that goes into continuing this process. But at the same time, we, you know, it's not just on our end, we are working with the regulators as well, and we want to make sure that we're, you know, doing everything that they, you know, would like us to do, that they would feel, you know, comfortable in order to, for them to make a well-informed decision, that they have all the information they need.
So, let me just ask, why this 8.1 now, if this is where we are?
Because we are really hoping that, within the next couple of months, we are able to bring to the public a couple of options for remediation plans that we can move forward with within this school year, where we can begin the bidding process, the contracts process, the paperwork process. So, if it's not in the capital plan next year, we're not going to be able to move forward with that work, if we're ready. I hope we are, but if it's not there, then we'll have to go through another process, we'll have to do an interim.
What, okay, have you asked the BET, let me just ask the quick question, have you asked the BET, "Yes, we want this in the capital budget as a placeholder, or we would rather have it as an interim"? Did we ask them what they want?
I have not asked them. I thought it was pretty for us to plan for it, if we knew what our potential range might be.
I'll just add to that, Peter, the feedback we've gotten, especially when we went for the interim for JC, is if there are things that are known, have them in your budget, if there are things that are truly emergencies, but this is not an emergency item, I would think we'd appreciate planning for it. Whether or not it actually makes it through the entire capital process is a different story, but the fact that we are thinking about it, we're planning for it, we're knowing that it's coming down the line, I think is important. Dr. Francis.
Just going to add, I mean, I certainly would not want to be in a circumstance where we're ready to start doing the next step, and we don't have the money. It's not like this is a surprise that it's coming, so I do feel like, you know, if someone wants to tell us that there's a different way they want us to ask for the money, that's fine, but I mean, I think we should make sure we've got the money ready when we've got a plan, and not have that be a further delay.
Ms. Stowe.
I wasn't planning to ask this, but since we're on soil remediation, this is prior to me being on the board, thank God. The Greenwich High School soil remediation seems to be handled completely by DPW, so that's not our project. I guess it doesn't matter why it's been delineated, one was ours and one isn't, I suppose it doesn't matter, it's sort of all the town's problem at this point, but we just sort of oversee this one?
We do, we actually work with DPW on, we're involved in every meeting, we actually have the similar team structure for both the high school and Western, so that we're following the same, you know, the same path.
Ms. Dayton, and then Ms. Reban.
I assume when you put things in the budget, that they're necessities, but I still have to kick the tires on three items that aren't projects that are attractive to board members. Do we really need, for health and safety reasons, to take out the oil tanks? Do we really need a new phone system? Do we really need to do the masonry work? Are they safety issues, or are they just on the schedule to be included in the plan?
So, all those do need to be done, I mean, certainly the oil tanks, because if they've been sitting there for a long time, you could risk or have unknown leakage, we just don't know, so we want to mitigate that. What was the second item you mentioned?
The masonry and the phone system, are they health and safety issues that have to be addressed?
I mean, certainly the masonry is in poor shape, it's on there, because it is our highest priority. The phone systems are literally crashing on us, we're in desperate need of a phone upgrade. In fact, I understand today, I have to authorize for rotary phones to be replaced someplace, I didn't even know we still have those. So, yes, we're in desperate need of those items.
Ms. Reban.
I have a question on the high school roof expansion joints, because I'm just remembering, this is, is this the same section of roof that was bundled with the JC roof, or is this a different part?
I don't know if it was bundled, I have to get back to you.
This was the trade-off of the-
No, the windows, it's the windows, right? Oh, right, that was the windows.
It was rooms. That, the high school was supposed to be more money, and it came in less, and JC's supposed to be less money, and it came in more. Are these joints anything to do with that new roof that was replaced within two years?
I'd have to research, I'm not sure.
So, I actually have a question about the generators for Western and Hamav. Offhand, I don't know if you know, are both of those shelters for the town?
No, Western is not, neither one of them are, I see Dan.
Okay, so I guess I'm questioning what the need for the generators is, and you don't have to answer it, I'm not looking at you, Dan, but what the need for the generators is, because I think even when we've been redesigning New Love while we're putting a pad in and doing some of the wiring, we're not purchasing a generator, because again, the decision-making was, this is not a town shelter. So, if it's a need for something specific, I just want to know what that need is.
It just keeps basic items running, so it's not a full-scale generator.
Okay. Ms. Stowe.
Okay, just to take a step back, so, we didn't, there wasn't a number, per se, from the BET, as we know, on the capital, but historically, I don't think we've ever been higher than 19, 20 million, so 51 is a headline, isn't great, given also the operating issues that we're dealing with. So, if we were to sort of be comparing just to the annual infrastructure facility improvement, that's sort of the 13 million number, yeah? That's how we would, so in our last year being, was it 19 or 20? I don't remember, okay. And so, for ongoing, that's sort of the comparison, in fact, we're sort of saying we're like 7 million less, maybe than-
Typically, ten.
Yeah, I think it was a little lower last year.
Was 10, then we went to 14? I guess our projections were 19, then the KGND budget, maybe that's what I'm thinking.
KGND says you need to go to 20.
Yeah, says we need to go to 20, okay. So, if I were to look at it then, in a sense, the KGND would sort of be the 13.4, plus we're doing the feasibility studies, and the central middle school, so the big number that's kind of getting us to 50 is obviously the Cardinal Field Improvement. Are we sort of thinking that we break that out over a few years, or is there a reason that we have to sort of, can we do that in three stages? You know, bleachers, lights?
Yeah, I mean, it probably, probably could be phased, Cardinal Field, that the committee would have to convene and discuss potentially phasing it.
And just, I'll add, the committee has discussed phasing it, so-
Okay.
It was structured, right, from scoreboard out, and so the next thing would be the bleachers, which we know need to be replaced. All right, Mr. Scher, then.
Ralph, can we, can we get this capital budget prioritized? You guys have laid out what these items are. Can we get them prioritized, because, I mean, it's great to go ask the BET for 50 million dollars, 51 or whatever that is. I have no idea whether they're interested in going and putting all this stuff on the books. These projects are going to go across, a lot of these projects are going to go over multiple years, so we don't need to worry about the phasing, the BET will worry about that. But the, I'm sure they'll ask us questions if they want to know how the cash will actually leave the building. But in terms of the prioritization, because there's a lot of projects here, and if we were not going to absorb all that, if the BET said, "I'm not absorbing 50 million, you can absorb 30," I think we should get ahead of the curve on deciding what's going on, because I, you know, no offense to my friends in the athletics department, but if there were trade-offs- were trade-offs, I'm not sure that would be the top of my hit list of, of, you know, capital projects. I'm going to want a safe field before I go build a twenty million dollar stadium at Western, as an example. I'm going to want, I'm going to want safety and security in our buildings before I'm going to want a new stadium, as an example. So can we get some prioritization? One other process question, Peter, we typically, we're talking capital every single one of these meetings?
Yes.
Because we don't always do that, so.
No, I think it's important we do that based on.
Okay, then I'll, I'll save a lot of this for the prioritization. There is one, I don't know how you want to handle this, I've never been through this before, either, you know, because of this thing of interims and all the rest of it and saying if we're projecting it, put it in. There is an item I think we need to, we should be adding to the capital budget. The item that we should be adding to the capital budget, you guys may be aware, you know, when the MESA project had to fit into its budget, you know, there was a little bit of, you know, there are nice fancy terms around this, fit and finish, and I forget whatever it is, but you know, they were like a car driving down the street, throwing things out the window, the light and the weight of the thing. So there were some things that then had to get added back in later, that got added back into the project. Fortunately, some of it got added back in through the largesse of individuals in the town, which we should be really thankful for. There's one item that got tossed out. Our piano that's for that building does not, is the wrong piano for that space. The piano that is there is from nineteen sixty-seven, didn't know that. I learned the district bought four or six Steinways in nineteen sixty-seven, and that's what's in these spaces. And so it's fifty years ago, or almost fifty years ago. The one that's in the Performing Arts Center, or whatever we call it, the MESA space, was the appropriate thing for an auditorium that was four to five hundred, six hundred people, not one for thirteen hundred people. So a group of people have gone out and raised money already. The cost of the right piano for the space is a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, turns out. A group of people have already raised fifty, and they rightfully, perfect opportunity for a public partnership of, they'll give us money for this thing and we could fill in the rest. And rather than do it as an interim, I would hope that we might consider just putting it into the budget with the, in the capital request, with the caveat that it's dependent upon the private donor giving us the fifty thousand that they already have raised. So I don't know what the appropriate way to do that is. I don't know, Ralph, if you want to make an amendment to it, or you want somebody to eventually make a motion, maybe at the next meeting, I don't know how you want to handle it, but I would love to have that under consideration because it's needed and it was something that should have been done with MESA when the project was built. But okay, now we have an opportunity to fix that problem.
Ms. Dayton, then Dr. Francis.
I support the suggestion of having the administration prioritize all of the capital requests, but there is one item that I think is the biggest bang for the buck, and I really don't want to see it anywhere except at the very top of the list. How's that for a compliment? It's the seventy-five thousand dollars for the new entryway at Greenwich High School for safety and security. I don't want to see that drop anywhere down the list. Thank you.
Here, here. Dr. Francis.
Two things. First, I just want to add on to that, which was, my understanding was that the entryway was initially thought it was going to be addressed as part of the media center rebuild, and that they were talking about doing those two potentially together. Is that still a part of the plan?
I'm trying to recall.
We peeled that out.
I think it was a separate phase.
We peeled it out.
I have to look at this. It's separate? Separate, I'm hearing it's separate.
Okay. Then my, my other point, the point I originally wanted to say was, I do think we need to be a little bit careful when we're talking about going up from ten or ten fifteen to fifty. One of the things that KGND pointed out is that when we in the past have done things, what we've typically done is said, this is our maintenance, and then we would have sort of separate projects. So we would do, New Lev would be a completely separate project, or Ham Ave was a completely separate project. And their recommendation was not really to split those things out in such a way and to have it sort of be more of a combined thing, because a lot of times you're sort of killing two birds with one stone when you're combining things in a different way. So it's tricky, I think, for us to figure out how you then compare back, but I think you want to remember that in the past, we may have had ten million for maintenance, but we had all these other big projects, they would, yeah, the MESA, the Ham Ave, the Glenville, the New Lev, you know, if you divide those things out over the number of years, that was clearly bringing us up well above that ten or thirteen million that we're looking at. So it, you know, realize that what we're looking at now is sort of more like one piece. Really, in the past, we're sort of in two different pockets.
Right.
Ms. Sher.
Can I add to something Ms. Dayton said? That's why I'm waiting on the prioritization, but since you brought it up, I'll say it now. I'm totally disappointed that it's seventy-five thousand for security next year. I was hoping we would have had, we desperately, I'll just say this again, I said it in a meeting, so it won't be anything. We desperately need what's called a man trap on the entrance to the front of our school, where the, I mean, this, it's crazy in this day and age that you could walk directly into the school with hundreds of children at a passing time. I mean, we needed to deal with that problem like Lickety Split before, and I would have hoped we would have figured out how to spend this year's money to get far enough along so that we had an understanding of how much money was needed for that capital budget next year. I don't want it to go, oh, let's go look at it and plan it in nineteen twenty, and nineteen twenty, I think I've got that right, yes, nineteen twenty, and then twenty twenty-one, we'll ask for the money. That's like going another eighteen months from now before we do that. I'd love it if you guys could figure out a way to rethink that item. We need to have enough money to do something at the front of the school so that even if someone comes into the school, you know, and there's a, you can't like walk in one door and then automatically walk in another door. It shouldn't be that. I couldn't, if you've ever been at passing, go stand in that hallway and think about good and bad things for two minutes, and you're going to realize something needs to be done.
Dr. Francis.
I'm not disagreeing with the sentiment of moving along, but I would just like to make sure that we realize schools in general, and our schools are very safe places. And while scary things happen out there, in general, our schools are very safe.
All right, anything else on capital? All right, I think we've lost the slide, but basically we'll email around the dates for board comment. I would encourage all board members to submit questions and comments in writing as early as possible prior to meetings. It's better if you do that, then we can get some explanation and at the meeting have more detailed things. Ms. Raven.
We don't have to retype what we just all asked, correct?
Michael's going to type that up, we'll get draft minutes out quickly, that will contain the questions that were asked tonight. Mrs. O'Neil.
So one of the things that I'd asked for was a list of the staff, so that we then could look and say, well, these are the programs we have. So just not full FTEs, but if there's a point four doing this program and a point six doing the other program, we should know, not by name, but we should know that that's how that program is being staffed. So that's what we need for the district, so we know what we have.
Yes, Ms. Stowe.
What sort of, we're just emailing these questions, or there's like a Google shared document or something that we're supposed to be using?
No, we'll email them to the super, he will put them all together and then they'll respond. Yeah, we may have had a Google doc last year, and I think, we'll email them this year and do it that way.
Excellent, much preferred.
We're not as savvy with Google docs as our students are. All right, with that, anybody want to make a motion? Dr. Francis.
I moved to adjourn the meeting.
All right, all those in favor? All right, we adjourned, thank you, everyone. Thank you to the public and RTM and BET members that came out.